Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sego Ani Buju Wachea Kue Kue. It's the Mayor of the City of Kingston. I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you. So next, we will look to approve the addits. There is an addition of a delegation, a report from Planning Committee, and the deletion of new motion number two, and then a replacement of new motion number two, and then some communications. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Neal. And that carries. Okay, moving on, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counselor McLaren?
Jeff McLaren of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of info report number three in that property, I own property in close proximity to property referenced in the report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other disclosures? Okay, so seeing none, we will move on to presentations. We do have a couple of presentations this evening, and the first is for me to present the Mayor's Arts Awards. All right. So last night in Memorial Hall, it was my great pleasure to have presented the Mayor's Arts Awards for 2018 to five members of the Kingston community for their artistic achievements and extraordinary contributions in and to the arts. So I'd like to officially present the 2018 recipients with their certificates on behalf of the City of Kingston. And the reason why we do this part here in the City Council meeting is so that each of the names of the recipients will be included in the City Council minutes. So first, the first category of award is the Creator Award, and it recognizes living artists, artistic collectives, or arts organizations. Three Creator Awards are given each year to honor artistic merit and/or innovation that advances the arts in the city, contributes to the development of the art form, and expresses the cultural vitality of Kingston. The 2018 recipients are Erin Bull, Onagaté Blanchard, and Clark McKay. Congratulations, Erin, Onagatway, and Clark. I invite you to come up now to receive your certificates. And the Arts Champion Award recognizes a living individual, organization, or corporation making an extraordinary leading contribution to the arts in Kingston as a volunteer, advocate, supporter, sponsor, or philanthropist. The 2018 recipient is Karen Peppercorn. And finally, the third category of award is the Limestone Arts Legacy Award. The Limestone Arts Legacy Award recognizes individuals from the past whose sustained and substantial contributions have built the artistic vitality of the city, nurturing and enabling forms of creation, participation, presentation, and enjoyment, whose leadership has inspired others and whose influence has been felt in the region and beyond. The 2018 recipient is Kim Renders, and Kim's husband, Robert Lindsay, will be accepting the award. Robert, please come on. and we just so appreciate all of your contributions to the cultural vitality of Kingston. Of course, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the City Council meeting, but of course, if you would like to just slip out at this point, we certainly understand that as well. Okay. So I'm going to shift back over to my normal chair, and so we have a second presentation on this evening. Jan McDonald, Project Manager, Marketing, Downtown Kingston BIA, and Sandy Wilson of Alexander Wilson Architect Incorporated will present council with a framed set of the limited edition 2017 Pewter Collection and announce the 2018 Pewter Collection.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm Jan. Sandy unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but sends his regrets. Thank you so much for welcoming me here this evening. I am very excited and pleased to announce that 2018 is actually our 25th anniversary of doing the Pewter Ornament Collectibles in downtown Kingston. We didn't think it would last this long, but it's amazing how many wonderful buildings and landmarks there are in our city. So as you probably know, each holiday season, five of Kingston's most beloved and well-known landmarks are selected to be cast as holiday Pewter ornaments. It's a chance to celebrate the wide array of local properties that are rich with historic value in our city. This program has been and continues to be tremendously popular with Kingstonians, previous residents, tourists, and people from afar away as B.C. and Alberta who want memories of their time in Kingston. Each ornament has a value of over $20, but is made available to everyone for only $10 upon presentations of a $25 receipt from any downtown business, and that can be the grocery store, your dentist, it doesn't matter, as long as you've spent it in downtown Kingston. Expert opinions are coupled with valuable public input during this building selection process. The committee does its best to ensure each year's collection is balanced, attractive, and representative of the sites we've chosen, we choose from here in Kingston. This year's collection is going to be launched on Monday, November the 19th. One ornament will be available each Monday until the final ornament is revealed on December 17th. Here's our list for this year. First up is Berance's Grocery on Union Street. I'm sure many of you are familiar with that business. We decided to honor it this year because they're celebrating 100 years as Berance's Grocery. Second is the Mulberry Waldorf School on Marklin Street, a lovely symmetrical brick building that was once the St. John's School and is now the home of Mulberry Waldorf. Third is Sacred Heart of Mary Church, Catholic Church, on Wolf Island. We decided to honor this church this year because looking into it, I don't know if you've ever been there, but the facade itself and the building is absolutely beautiful. They had a fire that they had to renovate inside the church, and it was reopened, this is the part I found really interesting, reopened on Christmas Eve of last year, exactly 100 years after the first mass in that church. So not only a beautiful building, but some interesting history, as they all are. Fourth is James Reed Furniture on Princess Street. I'm sure you're all aware of that building, and we were surprised we hadn't done that one yet because it really is stunning store and facade on Princess Street. And finally, we're doing something different this year. To celebrate the 25th anniversary, we are bringing back an ornament, one that we are asked for every year. It sold out its first year very quickly, which was 1997, I believe, so we are bringing back the Kingston Penitentiary. Seemed appropriate. So as mentioned, all of the ornaments are available for $10 with receipts, and they are going to be on sale at the Visitor Experience Center across the street, the Grand Theater Box Office, and the Leon Center Box Office. So in celebration of the wonderful history and architecture possessed in our city, as well as the continued support given to us by Mayor Patterson and City Council, we're pleased to present a framed set to add to your collection of the 2017 limited edition Pewter Collectibles.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we will move on in our agenda to delegations. We have one delegation this evening. Martin Skolnick, President of Frontenac Club Incorporated, and Raymond Zabak, Partner, Schultz &amp; Zabak Architects Limited, will appear before council to speak to Clause 3.1 of Report 87, received from Heritage Kingston with respect to an application for heritage permit, 225 King Street East. And just a reminder to our delegation that you have five minutes. Please come forward.
Your worship, Mayor Brian Patterson, esteemed members of council, city staff, and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Martin Skolnick. I'm one of the proud owners of the Frontenac Club Inn. In fact, we are the fifth owner in the history of this iconic property dating back to 1845. We purchased the property on hotel business in June 2017 and have been working diligently over, ever since, with our architect, heritage consultants, our other project consultants, city staff, and members of the Heritage Committee to carefully plan the restoration and renovation of this historic property, which has unfortunately seen some physical neglect over the last several years. Our plan is to close the business down on December 9th and start renovations immediately following, subject to receiving council approval here tonight, and obtaining all our other required approvals, and to reopen as a 20-suite boutique hotel as soon as possible in the summer of 2019. Summer is, of course, any Kingston hotel year's busiest and most profitable part of the year, or part of this year, so we are hopeful that we can stay on schedule. Since we are limited to five minutes, I will now turn our presentation over to Ray Zabak, who is our lead architect, to provide an overview of the project for you. We'll then both be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Martin. Just want to start out with a quick sort of overview of what we're doing there. For anyone who's not familiar, I know members of council and the two members of the Heritage Committee here would be familiar with this, but Martin mentioned the building is currently a hotel with 16 rooms. This will be increased through this renovation to 20 rooms. There will be a significant upgrade and modernization in those rooms. There will be an enhanced food service, renovation of the outdoor patio, a kind of a rich landscaping program for the site. We're going to be using a lot of the existing fabric of the building, fabric, I mean the historic parts of the building. Life safety aspects in the building will be improved, emergency egress system will be improved. There will now be an ability to get throughout the facility without having to go outside. I think anyone who stayed there knows that the Cartwright Building, the 1820s building at the east end of the site can't be accessed from the main building, you have to go back outside. We're going to connect the two buildings through this renovation, and we're going to enhance a couple of the, or three of the existing hotel rooms by providing some stone and glass additions on the top of the building at the rear, behind the original Bank of Montreal building. We don't do these projects alone. There's a lot of consultation, and we've had numerous consultations with, of course, Martin and his partners, city staff. We've responded, I think, and worked with city staff to address their comments and concerns. We had a pre-consultation meeting with the Heritage Committee, made several adjustments, including adjustments to the architecture of the additions we're proposing on the building. And we seem to have a considerable report from the Heritage Committee for 99% say of this proposal. We met with the Heritage Committee, we had a pre-consultation meeting, as I mentioned. At our heritage approval meeting where we went to get our heritage permit, there were four members present, that I guess constitutes a quorum. We had two members that had enthusiastic support, I'd call that enthusiastic support for our proposal. Two members, and in one of the members' words, were 90% supportive, but they had some concerns about the architecture of the glass additions. The pre-consultation meeting had talked about those glass additions, and we did make some adjustments to those in response to those comments. We still had a bit of opposition to those at the actual Heritage Committee. We had a split vote, so we lost the vote. Now, the history development additions to this complex demonstrates a consistent pattern. All of the several building additions have been representative of their own time period. None really attempt to mimic the original Bank of Montreal classic revival architecture.
30 seconds.
Okay, I just, I didn't realize, speaking that slowly, but I thought I was running through this. We do have, I just want to point out, and I think this was distributed to council today, we do have a letter from, or a memo from Carl Bray, who actually wrote the guidelines for development of the Sidnum Ward Historic District, who, and I quote, "As co-author of the policies and guidelines contained in the plan, I support city staff's interpretation of the proposed design's response to the guideline in section 5.4.2." He goes on to say, "As my opinion, the design of the glazed component of the addition and the dividing spandrels is an acceptable response."
Thank you, sir. That's great. Are there any questions from City Council? Counselor Schott?
The letter he was just reading, you were just reading, Mr. Zabak, is on the back of the addits, and I would just ask you to read the last, you were just doing that when you ran out of time, the last, the last half, the last paragraph where he puts it in context with the, what would maybe not be permissible under 5.4.2? If you could just read that section for council, because I feel like that's very telling.
Can I read the whole last?
Yeah, please.
As lead consultant for Sidnum Heritage Conservation District Study and Plan, and as co-author of the policies and guidelines contained in that plan, I support city staff's interpretation of the proposed design's response to the guideline in section 5.4.2. The intent of that guideline was to preclude large glazed rear additions to properties that would dominate the existing building as well as the adjacent streetscape due to being visible from the flanking street. For example, a large rear wing entirely glazed would not meet the guideline. However, small glazed components of rear additions, though visible from the public realm, do not dominate the built heritage resource and as a result, meet the guideline. In this case, it is my opinion that the design of the glazed component of the addition with dividing spandrels is an acceptable response to the guideline.
Thank you. So my question would be, and you mentioned it in passing, the comments in the pre-consultation and the, and then the written comments from the members of the committee that had issues with the appearance of the glazing, and what changes were made as a result of those comments from the original on those glass additions?
If you recall, the original proposal here, there's a picture of one of these. There are actually two of these on the building. One is on the top of the courtyard there facing William Street. The other is at the, I guess that's the southeast corner of the building. You can see it by the fire escape there. When we originally proposed this at the pre-consultation meeting, we had a single horizontal emulsion at the floor level. The window panels spanned from floor to floor. We articulated those a little bit by bringing in, these are translucent spandrels at the roof elevation and at the floor elevation to bring the scale of those glass additions down. I think there was some idea in the committee that that was somewhat successful.
Okay, are there any other questions? Counselor Schell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Could I, that in the design, where there are modern parts, there are actually no heritage attributes being changed, taken away? Could you explain that, that the building as we know it will continue, and these are additions, how that affects the attribute?
The main attribute, of course, a building on the corner, it's a big neoclassical building there, it's huge scale. This building has a series, sort of that building with a bunch of complex additions on the rear. The additions we're talking about actually sit on top of the existing stone walls that are there. We're not taking any of those walls down, we're simply augmenting the building with these pieces. We're not taking anything off the building, we're adding components to the building. So the glass on that elevation, actually, you can determine the division there between what you see there today and what we're putting on here. It's a clear and distinctive new addition, and I think there's, there are words in the Heritage Conservation District guidelines that talk about this as an applicable strategy to this kind of project.
Thank you. And just by the reason that staff have agreed to this plan is that the glass is set back. If it were sort of on the street dominating the building, that wouldn't be appropriate for the Heritage District plan, but because it's set back, and the other part is actually, you can't really view it from the streetscape, that that's why staff agreed that this was acceptable?
Yes, I think that's correct, yes.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will move on. We have no other delegations, we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We have two motions of condolence. First, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schell, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the friends and family of Spiros Canelas, Director of Facilities Management and Construction Services on the passing of his father, Michael Canelas, on October 3rd, 2018. Michael will be dearly missed by all those that knew him. Our thoughts are with Spiros and his family during this difficult time. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schell, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family, friends, and former coworkers of Gordon Keith Wall, who passed away peacefully on September 9th, 2018, at the age of 95. Gordon's career spanned over 37 years with the City of Kingston. He served as a firefighter, the emergency measures coordinator, and later as the director of the Neighborhood Improvement Program. Gordon made many positive contributions to the corporation and was well-respected for his dedication to serving the community. Gordon left a legacy of honor, generosity, and respect for others. He will be greatly missed by so many. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time. So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, we have no deferred motions this evening, so we will move on to reports. First up is report number 86 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor George, that report number 86 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
There are six clauses. Would anyone like any of those clauses separated? Counselor Stroud?
Five, please.
Okay, separations. We will first deal with the balance of the clauses. So Clause 1, Medical Tiered Response Program Agreement with the County of Frontenac Paramedic Service. Clause 2, Award of Contract for Janitorial Services for 1211 John Counter Boulevard. Clause 3, Award of Contract for Janitorial Services for 21 Court Street Courthouse. Clause 4, Award of Contract for Inspection, Maintenance, and Repairs of Overhead Doors for the City of Kingston. And Clause 6, Award of Contract for Demolition Services for 1084 Sidnum Road. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause 5, Sole Source for Public Engagement Facilitation Team for the Engage for Change, YGK Reconciliation Journey Phase 2, and the Your Stories, Our Histories projects. Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, worship. I have a question to staff about basically the essence of this item. So there, you'll see there, there's a cost, and because it was a sole source, it needs council approval. So before we give that, could maybe staff just tell council and those watching the reason that this has to be an external hire for this role, for this project?
Commissioner?
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor, so a couple of things. Regardless of who is retained, we would want to have a consultant to help us lead this process. From a staff perspective, we don't have the internal capacity to do that work. So what is being proposed is in fact a sole source situation recommendation, and there are a couple of reasons for that. When looking at the work that needs to be done and carried through in the community as far as Engage for Change Phase 2, and Your Stories, Our Histories, those are going to be very complex conversations that will need to take place within our community and will cause a lot of, no doubt, controversy, and will be also, need to be very respectful and sensitive. And we looked at, we tried to figure out the best approach to this, to be quite honest, and we wanted to make sure that who we retain actually had some form of experience to carry on these types of conversations within communities. So the team that's being recommended to council tonight is actually a team that was involved in the entire federal reconciliation process. So it is a team that comes forward with the type of expertise, experience, and knowledge that is quite unique out there in the market, and we want to make sure that we get this right. We do feel that is very critical for, not just for the corporation, but the community to get this right.
Okay, so that answers the expertise and why the external hire. Now, there's another question, a different aspect, is how is this going to interact with the committees and with council and the decision-makers at city level when there is a result of this process? Like what can we look forward to? If you could explain that, please.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Mr. Mayor, so as we do retain a number of consultants to work on various projects, we usually consult with committees. In this case, we anticipate that the Heritage Committee, for example, or Heritage Kingston would be quite involved in this particular process and dialogue, and there may be other committees as well. There would be information that would be coming back to council as well. So it's not a process that will be completely isolated from committees and council.
So I'm satisfied, but I would just like to comment before we vote that Heritage Committee did have a number of resignations this term, mostly from the kind of members that volunteered for this type of cultural project, and so nominations will have to replace those members. And when nominations does so, and six of you will be on that committee, you will need to sort of have the same kind of context in mind as Commissioner did when she hired this external team, that the members of the next Heritage Kingston Committee need to have awareness of what reconciliation is and how the stories are collected and those sensitivities. So I just wanted to highlight that at this point, that there's no point in getting this expert team to gather this information and then have the members of the citizen committee that receive it not be able to properly deal with that information. So I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on Clause 5. Okay, so we will call the vote on Clause 5. And that carries. Okay, on to report number 87 from Heritage Kingston.
I rise to submit number 87. Report number 87 from Heritage Kingston, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Shell, for council's consideration. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Deputy Mayor Shell, that report number 87 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So there are a number of items in this report. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Counselor Shell?
Please.
Okay. So what we do is we will first vote on the items under Category 1 and Category 2. So those are the applications recommended for approval, both statutory and non-statutory consultation. Please vote. And that carries. So now we will move to Category 3, Applications Not Supported for Approval by Heritage Kingston, Non-Statutory Consultation. Number 1, Application for Heritage Permit, 225 King Street East. Counselor Shell.
Mayor Patterson, yes, I was at the meeting. And I can remember when the discussion came up that the plan had been changed to accommodate the concerns of a couple of the members. So the plan was changed to put the bar across the windows. And there was a change to the fire escape to make it look less intrusive. I think those were the two I remember. And I thought the committee was satisfied. And part of it was, we discussed things like the plan and what's allowable in the plan, plus what's already in Kingston. There are a number of pictures in the report. But there's also the corner of Brock and Wellington here, the Right Spot Restaurant. And that's a prime example of something that's a heritage series of buildings that were then added to in a modern way and generally have been considered to be very good. The Bartlett Gym right now at Queens has two glass additions going on, set back, just as the plan calls for, and not nearly as massive as the Bartlett Gym, but they are glass. And another big one in Kingston back in the 70s, I remember it well, when the Donald Gordon Center was created. It's a beautiful limestone building, rose lawn. And then a very modern-for-the-time addition was put on. And I've never heard complaints about that one. I think people considered that good architecture that fit what was being asked of the two buildings. And then another one for me, when my kids went to Victoria Public School, the addition of the business school is a modern addition that has basically enhanced the school. You don't walk by there and feel that something terrible has happened to Victoria Public School. So I must admit, I was surprised at the way the vote went because I think what's going to happen to the Frontenac Inn is going to be an incredible enhancement. The windows, the doors, the way, any problems with the limestone that are there now. The building is tired, and it certainly needs some land. It needs the investment. And if this is the way to get the investment that also fits the plan, I'm quite happy to vote for it. And I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the vice chair chaired this meeting, and as I was at work at KGH, and one of the reasons that the numbers were so low. But I did consult with all the members after the fact. There was another member that did not attend other than myself that said he would have supported the application. But I did consult with the vice chair, and he was one of the two that voted against the recommendation. But he did send me correspondence after the fact, more recently, saying that most of the elements, I think he said, he's the one that said 99%. I was trying to find that part. 99% of the application was sound. So it comes down to the glass addition that we were just, that was just saw up on the screen. And so really, it's up to us here tonight to just sort of sum it up as best I can in layman's terms. Most of the building, as you see it, the limestone building, the original bank, plus the additions, that all, that's what's described in the Heritage District Plan. And then there's some guidelines that talk about how to do additions and how to treat things, how to add, or what guidelines to follow. These are always suggestions in the district plan. And then we have this letter from the author of the district plan, and so it happens, Carl Bray, sort of clarifying. And I think the reason I had Mr. Zabak, the architect, read that paragraph is I think it really sums it up. Had it been a full-winged glass addition on one side or a whole, a whole sort of standalone addition that was all in glass, it might have really been incompatible with the district plan as it's written. But as a small addition in isolation, it's really a subjective call. It's a subjective call whether or not you think it fits with the building. So that's really what your decision is. If you think those two small glass additions are okay with the overall heritage feel of the building, then there's no reason not to give the permit. And so as I wasn't there, I'm not going to give my opinion. But I think that you can make up your minds as long as you have that context. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will call it on number 3, Clause 1.
Could you just by how?
Yes, thank you for reminding. So although it's classified, application not supported for approval by Heritage Kingston, it comes to council as a straight recommendation. So if you approve the heritage permit, then you vote yes. If you want to deny the heritage permit, then you would vote no. So yes means yes, no means no. All right. Thank you. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to report number 88 from the Arts, Recreation, and Community Policies Committee.
Thank you. My pleasure to present number 88 from the Arts, Recreation, and Community Policies Committee. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Shell. For presentation to council for consideration. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Deputy Mayor Shell, that report number 88 from the Arts, Recreation, and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are three clauses. Counselor Holland.
Number 2, please.
Okay, so we will separate Clause 2. So first, we will vote on the remaining clauses. Clause 1, Send Update to the Kingston Commemoration Policy. And Clause 3, Appointments to the Poet Laureate Working Group. Please vote. And that carries. Clause 2, Community Outdoor Rinks. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Worship. So just looking at the chart on page 225, there are, and throughout the report, it references different operations of various types of facilities, outdoor rinks, and those that are staffed and not staffed and all of that. The thing that I found that I was interested in on this, in this chart, is the fact that some parks are lit and some are not. Some outdoor skating rinks are not. And this sort of coincides with those that are staffed and those that are not. But one question that I have is whether the lighting of parks that have existing outdoor rinks, whether they're operated by volunteers, those that are operated by volunteers, whether the lighting of those facilities is something that can be addressed to ensure that the skating surfaces can be used after 5:00 PM?
Mr. Falwell.
Through you, Worship. Certainly, we can review each facility that's currently not lit. In some cases, it can be challenging for us to provide power to those locations as some of the outdoor rinks are isolated. But on a case-by-case basis, we're happy to take a look and make some improvements where the interest is.
Thank you. And so would the lighting of that be simply like the lighting of the ice surface? Or is this, are we talking about potentially lighting recreational spaces, like keeping the parks lit on a permanent basis?
Mr. Falwell.
Through you, Worship. This would be specific to those outdoor rink locations. But once again, it would depend on the location. We wouldn't want to have a light out some distance away from the street without a safe way to get there. So that's where it can be challenging if we have to go through a full, detailed park lighting system just to get to an outdoor rink. And may the potential that the cost might not be justified. Last year, we only had 20 outdoor days of skating. So to light a rink, you know, a couple hundred meters away from the street may not be in the best interest of council. But that's something that we would certainly bring back for consideration.
Great, thank you. I guess to bring up, which is not, I do know that, based on the report and on conversations I've had with staff, that this type of, the policy that we see in the report is flexible enough that neighborhood organizations, volunteers, can come forward and have the discussions and create the types of surfaces that are feasible, I guess, throughout the winter months. But I think one thing that this report brings up is the fact that we do have a policy that speaks to the lighting of recreational spaces. And because our municipal facilities, our parks, general recreational parks, are not meant to be used in the evening, there's no lighting. But a number of residents have brought up the fact that often, especially this time of year, children are still playing. The weather is warm, and it would really be desirable to have lighting in multiple, in multiple city parks. It's great that we have it in the winter months. It's just something I think I wanted to flag, this policy brought it to light. So thank you very much for the report.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause 2. And that carries. Okay, nothing from Committee of the Whole this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. There is report number 89 from Planning Committee.
I'm happy. Report number 89 from the Planning Committee duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner, that report number 89 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, Approval of an Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment, 205 Resource Road. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, now there's nothing from Committee of the Whole. We'll move to information reports. If you have a question, just raise your hand when I get to it. Number 1, Reports on Agreements Executed Under Delegated Approval and Signing Authority, July 1, 2018 to September 30, 2018. Number 2, Tender and Contract Awards Subject to the Established Criteria for Delegation of Authority for the Month of August, 2018. Number 3, Status Update on Town Homes Kingston Project and Difficulty. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, if I might. I'm wondering, this is the 2017, so I'm just curious when this was submitted? It's been some time, I believe. Normally, we get something before the end of the year for the previous year.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things that I want to point out before, just before I answer the question. We do have Adam Young from Secor Ross, who actually completed the 2017 audited statements that are included in your package tonight in terms of more detailed questions that you might have. But as far as the questions related to when we receive them, we actually received them about a month ago or so in terms of their draft form to us. But you are correct, Counselor Neal. The process, I believe, started in November or late, late last year. So they, they have been working on these financial statements for a number of months.
And so this particular draft financial statement, this is the usual auditor for Town Homes Kingston, their perennial auditor that brought this forward.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor. So as to my knowledge, this is a firm that has completed audited statements for a number of years now for Town Homes Kingston. And the Board of Director of Town Homes Kingston itself made the decision to obviously retain them again in 2017, which was last year, to complete their financial statements.
Thank you. And perhaps this is a question. I seem to have lost my page. But there was a, what appeared to be a surplus. But I believe that that surplus was generated from the remortgaging of Eldon Hall. Is that an accurate statement?
Mr. Young?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, not to be pedantic. When we use the term surplus, typically, we're talking about revenues less expenses. So certainly, one of the properties that was owned by the corporation was remortgaged during the 2016 fiscal year. So the cash balance went up and the mortgage payable balance went up. But that would not have created a surplus, as I see it, from an accounting perspective.
Thank you. Lastly, I know that there were questions that arose from the contracting out, if you will, of the maintenance that took place. Would you say that that created any cost savings or any value added when it was contracted out?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from our perspective, after being involved with the operations of Town Homes Kingston for a few months, we did not see the value based on the contract arrangement that was in place. And that is the reason why we decided to terminate that contract as indicated in the report that's before you and move to a different model.
Thank you.
Next, Counselor Hutchison, and then Counselor Holland. Counselor Hutchison.
Through you, Worship. Through you. I just want to clarify some more around that aspect. The, in the draft financial statements, it indicates that the maintenance contract, contract maintenance, it's called here, the total amount for maintenance and administration of that contract comes to, and I can be corrected by the commissioner or the auditor, And the amount that was said from 2016, the total actual was $50,554. Am I reading this correctly? That's my first question. That's on page 219 of the thing, 273 of our package.
Okay, so we'll stop there. Mr. Young?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The item that you're looking at, Counselor, for the 2016 comparatives, the $50,544, that number comprises various contract maintenance expenditures incurred by the corporation during 2016, which are not exclusive to the maintenance contract that you're referring to. So that would be all contract maintenance, not just the service provider that you're asking.
Okay, so it should be the main benefits under there as well. Would that be a fair?
Yeah, so if.
Those two numbers belong together.
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. If I was to try to, I think, do the analysis that you do, I would be probably trying to compare the maintenance wages and benefits number that you see in the fiscal 2016 column, which represents wages and benefits paid to internally-employed property management staff, to the amounts that you're seeing in the 2017 fiscal year for some of those individuals who are still there, plus the external contract maintenance line items that you see directly above.
Right. Right. That seems to be, the main interest is that, on this, on this point, anyway, is that it indicates that in, under finances, on page 252, page 5 or 6, the 2017 audit indicates $180,449 operating deficit. That's for one year, the one year 2017? Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. That, that, that is correct.
Okay. So the main reason for that is then the contract maintenance, or maintenance contract that's there. Like, I looked at the sheets here, and I had difficulty finding $180,000 exactly.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor.
So that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay, so question asked, Mr. Young.
Certainly, through, through you, Mr. Mayor. If you were to look at page 258 of the package, I believe the $180,000 that you're looking for would be comprised of the roughly $141,587 in the municipal column, four numbers up from the bottom, plus the number directly beside it in the Eldon Hall column, $38,862. Some of those two numbers is, I believe, the $180,000 that you're referring to.
Thank you. And it's pointed here that the deficit for 2018 is projected to be more than $200,000. And what would be the cause of that? Or is it the same?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. So we do not yet have, obviously, the 2018 audited numbers we're providing you with the 2017, and I appreciate that it took some time to actually get the audited statements for, for that year. But we do know that there are certain trends that started in 2017 that continued for a period of time in 2018, one of them being the maintenance contract that, that's been referred to. So we, we did change our, our contract for maintenance, but that wasn't until, I believe it was November, that we actually switched over. So there's a period of time for 2018 where that contract is included. There were also a number of, of salaries, and you probably have noticed as well, in 2017, an increase in terms of salaries for administration. So those are some of the areas where we anticipate for 2018, we will see an ongoing deficit, yes.
Thank you. So I think the fundamental question here is, comes down to page 261 of our information, to 2D, where the auditor indicates that there's some question about the ability for this corporation to be viable, at least as presented in, according to the 2017. So I guess my question is, if we make these corrections, and if we change some of the practices that led to the problems that are cited, that we just discussed here, or just, you just indicated, would the, then would the corporation be viable? Because I know this is time-specific, when you made this opinion, so...
Mr. Young.
Your, your worship. I mean, the question of, of determining the viability of, of any organization is, is a, it's a broader question. I mean, you look at the, the, the cash flow that the organization is currently generating, you'd also look at its potential sources of financing, perhaps equity that, that it currently holds in some or all of its properties. A number of significant questions there. To refer to the financial statement note 2D that you, you, you mentioned, that, that note is, is there in the accounting world when we typically talk about a going concern issue. That is really the identification of, of certain factors, events, or circumstances that, that could cause users to question whether there is an issue with regards to the longevity of an organization. It's not within the context of, of a financial statement audit to, to conclude or determine the financial viability of, of an organization. That's, it's, it's a broader, a broader exercise. But as I, as I've indicated, the, the note is there to, to call the question, right, and, and to, to look for, for some answers.
Thank you. One more question.
And so this relates to page 252, the deficit, it says, this, under finances, the last line is, "The deficit for 2018 will now need to be covered through proceeds from the previous refinancing of Eldon Hall," which, you look through, it comes to 1.6 million. The question I have of the Commissioner, and maybe the answer can't be brought forward tonight. Eldon Hall is a federal project financed originally by the federal government, and the other aspects are variously provincial, then downloaded to the city and so on. Is it, is it legal for us to do that? That's my question.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things. My understanding is Eldon Hall is actually a private building, meaning that it's not part of the social housing portfolio. So to, to be clear on that. And in terms, to my knowledge, and we actually had this conversation earlier with, with Mr. Young, but in terms of transfer of funds, there would be a concern if we were transferring funds that are supposed to be utilized for social housing purpose into private housing building type of, of fund. In this case, we're doing, or we're proposing to potentially do the opposite. So we have not flagged any concerns with that approach. Actually, to my knowledge, the Board of Town Homes Kingston was intending to use this money that we are talking about from Eldon Hall to finance Seven Right Crescent. So if it was, I guess, an legal issue, I, I guess, then that the Board of Town Homes Kingston would have also been acting illegally by transferring those funds. But like I said, to our knowledge, and based on our previous conversation with Mr. Young, we do not foresee any issues with utilizing some of the funds from Eldon Hall to potentially finance a deficit that would be as a result of the social housing portfolio.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor?
Your worship. So I guess I'm going to start with where Counselor Hutchinson just left off. Mostly, the same, same question regarding the mortgaging of Eldon Hall, the situation with the deficit, the sort of apparent lack of capacity to do capital work because of the financial situation. All of these factors, how do they, if we put that into the broader context of the, not necessarily the viability of the organization, but the potential to ha, have an increased supply of affordable housing in the City of Kingston, can you, can you give us any reassuring words on what this, this situation means for the bigger question of affordable housing here?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through Mr. Mayor. Difficult question to answer in terms of the future of affordable housing when looking at one organization. So I would start by saying that affordable housing is, is much broader than Town Homes Kingston, recognizing that they have been, you know, a contributor to affordable housing in the community. Obviously, not all affordable housing units reside with this particular organization. I think at the end of the day, our main concern is to make sure that we do protect the current affordable housing that we do have with Town Homes Kingston. And whether that's by stabilizing the organization, or in the future, by a decision of potentially merging with Kingston-Frontenac Housing Corporation, the intent is to ensure that we can maintain what currently exists and, and maintain it well, which, as we know, there have been a number of situations where capital works, we know, has been outstanding, and we're trying to catch up to some of that maintenance. I think that's the key, to make sure that we have quality affordable housing, and to make sure that we have organizations that are capable in the future of adding more affordable housing. And that's really the work that we're trying to do now in terms of stabilizing and, and putting together the foundation.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to take another big step back, and, and just again, looking at the context, just for clarification, now that, that we have an information report on a project in difficulty, which, I'm just going to spell it out, if I'm incorrect, please let me know, which means, based on the fact that we have the project in difficulty, we had the triggering event, we are now in a situation where the service manager, which means Community and Social Services within the City of Kingston, act as both board and operations manager with the CEO in place from the City of Kingston as well. If you could just speak to the structure as we move forward, that would be really helpful.
Commissioner Hurdle.
And through you, Mr. Mayor. So we, Counselor, that in the summer, we declared Town Homes Kingston as a project under difficulty, which, at that time, what that meant was that as a service manager, which means city staff and more specifically, housing and social services, become responsible for this particular organization, and also is essentially, has the same authority as the Board of Director would otherwise have. So decisions around contracts that typically would have been approved by the board, now as, as service manager, we have that authority. Same thing with financial statements, we have the authority to sign off on those. We do have a responsibility to report back every three months on progress, which is what we're doing tonight. And we're providing council with the information that we have up to date as far as progress and what we see going forward. One of the things that, as counsel, you're aware, that we are still working on, the due diligence process as far as a potential merger, which you've asked us, as a membership to look into, and we anticipate that we will have a report back to you as membership in 2019 on this, to look at all the pros and cons, and, and to be able to make a decision in terms of how we move forward. And until then, I anticipate that as service manager, we will continue to manage the organization and ensure that we put in place the proper processes that, that we feel should be, whether it's from a financial perspective or a maintenance perspective.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Patterson. Town Home Board for a while, and I'd like to just talk about capital leases, because that was quite a heavy discussion. And just to clarify, when you purchase capital items under a lease agreement, you cannot just call the, the entire contract a capital contract. And that's what I'm seeing in the document on page 14, that the capital lease is split up into what was the capital cost of the items, plus the interest item on the lease. So that's page 14 of your report. And could you explain how that works in terms of expensing the interest portion of a capital lease? It's done a, a certain amount every year, I presume?
Mr. Young.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, the, the, the whole concept of a capital lease, you see it quite a bit in, in commercial circles. Basically, what, what we do for accounting purposes is, we set the, the asset up on the balance sheet, also set up a liability of, of equal amount. And then as time goes by, each dollar that you pay towards that lease arrangement gets split between a principal component and an interest component, based on the, the interest rate that's inherent in that lease. So when, when each dollar gets paid, a portion of the dollar gets recorded against the liability on the balance sheet, and a portion of that dollar gets expensed through the statement of operations.
Great. Was it confusion at times that the interest is expensed against revenue? It doesn't become part of a depreciation of, of the capital portion?
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. So over time, if you paid out $100,000, for example, on a capital lease arrangement, that $100,000 would eventually be expensed, partially through depreciation of the asset that you set up at the inception of the arrangement, and partially through the interest expense that got recorded through the payment of the, the cash flow stream.
Great, thank you. And I know it's confused, it's a big item, it's 1 million on the balance sheet. And just to Commissioner Hurdle, every three months, I presume what the council's going to hear is what things are becoming, are being put in place to turn Town Homes around, like that, that there will be specific explanations of how this is going to be turned into a profit-making corporation again.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and to Mayor. So to Counselor Shell's question, yes, that is correct. We will be updating council on the different initiatives that we're, we're undertaking to try to stabilize or improve the operations. So for example, we have a section on health and safety in this report, because that was a, a significant concern when we first got involved. Maintenance was another one that I'm sure you're still hearing about, but hopefully a little bit less with time. And the finances, another one that we have obviously started to focus on. So we will continue to update you on all of these items as we move forward on a three-month basis.
Just one question, just to clarify. Did city staff have any involvement in any financial decisions prior to the declaration of the project in difficulty this past summer?
To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, no, we did not. Anything that's report, reported in these audited financial statements were decisions, were based on decisions made by the Town Homes Kingston Board and/or staff at that time during that year. It is only in July 2018 that city staff got involved in terms of the operations and decision-making.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we will continue on. There are no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business. Number one, that the resignation of Haley Smith from Heritage Kingston be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Sanick, seconded by Counselor Stroud. Please vote. Still one person to vote. And that carries. Number two, that notwithstanding section 3.1.4, subsection 5 of the illumination of city facilities policy, Kingston City Council approved the illumination of City Hall and Springer Market Square in blue on November 20th, 2018, for Transgender Day of Remembrance. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Shell. And that carries. Number three, that is requested by Kate Lucia Purdy and Vanessa Martin, Kingston Holiday Market. Council designate the Kingston Holiday Market being held for eight weekends, commencing on November 2nd, 2018, and ending on December 22nd, 2018, at 168 Wellington Street, Kingston, as an event of municipal significance, to which special occasion permits may be issued by the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario. Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Shell. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. New motion number one, moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Holland. Whereas the City of Kingston has been hosting a variety of special Whereas the city of Kingston has been hosting a variety of special events within its parks for many years through a process that is mostly by request, and whereas some of the events have been very successful and have outgrown their park locations in terms of parking and other logistical needs and draw large crowds, which has at times resulted in damages to the parks and/or conflicts with other users. And whereas some parks, such as City Park, are now booked most weekends in the summer with multiple large events that at times are preventing ordinary use of the park. And whereas the city of Kingston has a special events policy to support and regulate events that are taking place on city properties, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to review the special events policy with the intent to identify specific criteria and parts that can properly accommodate events with larger crowds and significant logistical needs, and that this review include proposed policy changes, including reasonable usage limits, and a process that would more equitably distribute approved events among multiple suitable parks to minimize neighborhood disruption, and that staff report back to Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee by the end of Q1 2019 with proposed policy amendments. Councillor Stroud, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think it's mostly self-explanatory. The, I just wanted to point out that most of this wording comes from the commissioner in charge of parks. The wording itself was suggested as a solution to a problem that I had brought to park staff's attention, because of events at City Park that was very congested this year, and some of the events with more than 2,000 users. You can just imagine the parking issues that come with vents that kind of have outgrown their venue. For example, Baggett Street, several times this summer, in the no parking side, so one side of Baggett has no parking, that entire side was filled with parked cars, which was slowing down the buses, because it's an express route. This is just one example of one of the issues that I noticed as the district councillor. It's just sort of an accumulation of, it's a good problem to have, right? To have too many, too many successful events in one place. But there is a solution, and the solution is, A, we have a policy that when people come forward and asking for space, we say, just like we do with arenas, for example, when there's a hockey tournament, we say, well, these are arenas that are available, or if it's a soccer tournament, these are the fields that are available, that are for rental, and this is the fee. So we could do that with parks. That's just one possibility that could come out of this. I'm not saying that's going to be the result, but it's going to come to the committee. And I'm hoping that we would have a policy that would result in more different neighborhoods and different neighborhood parks getting these special events, rather than always sort of the same events. This would, this would actually involve, hopefully, the whole city. Like, I am the district councillor for City Park, but City Park, it, for me, is a problem with too much congestion, but for other councillors and other districts, it might be a problem of not enough. So I think that the win-win is that we review the policy and come up with something that actually distributes it better and also is clearer for the people that apply, so that we can continue to host all of these events and have even more growth without it being more of a problem than it already is. So that's, I'd ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody who's interested to speak? Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Patterson. City Park is very popular, and I can already hear some of the groups that rent it getting very frightened at this, because it is, it is the central park in the city of Kingston, and Lake Ontario Park is really, really busy. So what I would like to ask staff is, would you consider that as part of the mandate of this motion, that Tourism Kingston would be consulted as well?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we would definitely involve our partners, including Tourism Kingston, in that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other speakers, we will call the vote on new motion number one. Please vote. And that carries. New motion number two, as it appears in the edits. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Holland. Whereas residents have periodically complained about other property owners plowing or blowing snow onto their neighboring property, or similar, raking or blowing leaves onto their property without permission. And whereas a bylaw addressing such are not currently allowable under the Ontario Municipal Act, and whereas other municipalities have developed, as best practice, good neighbor guidelines to share with residents in order to address such concerns and to encourage more neighborly cooperation, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to review, as best practice, other municipalities' guidelines and practices, and bring forward information and recommendations on good neighbor guidelines as referenced above for consideration by the Administrative Policies Committee in Q2 2019. Councillor Neil, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, this came out of knocking on 5,000 doors and having three or four people complain about this as an issue. And in speaking with my seconder, I learned that over the last couple of years, as I had similar complaints from constituents, she did as well. So this was an attempt for us to address the issue, and I was in contact with our Property Standards Bylaw Director, and she shared with me a best practices document from Calgary that is a step in the right direction. Frankly, I wish that, I guess, it's, I've learned that it's common practice that you can't write bylaws from private property to private property. And, which is frustrating, some constituents, when I've explained that to them, have pointed out, well, the city, if I were to blow snow onto the sidewalk or the road, I'd be in, I'd be in conflict with a city bylaw from private property to public property, but the reverse isn't the case. And that seems to be the case everywhere, from where I phoned around to learn about best practices. What this is attempting to do is to address the problem as best we can, because we don't have, under the municipal act, the power to enact a bylaw, but it would be a best practice process that we could follow, that would allow us at least to try to address the problem through negotiating best practice with a neighbor. And so I'm hopeful that this, this will pass. I've had several people comment on, on social media about how this is a problem that they've been faced with. So I hope that this motion passes, and it gives staff an opportunity, and Administrative Policies Committee an opportunity in the Q2 of the next council to be able to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir Bohm?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. So I think I'm going to play a little bit of the devil's advocate on this one. So I've also heard lots of comments from social media, and it was, why is council discussing how leaves and snow is placed on people's yards and all that? And there's a 3,500-person Facebook group over in the East End, and it was kind of trending, this whole issue. And it was basically one of those things where, at what point do you stop creating guidelines? I mean, we're going to tell people how to be a good neighbor. Well, I was sitting here pondering this, and I do respect and understand where this is coming from, but I came up with a few things on my own, and it was, well, talk with each other. Yeah, that doesn't always work. Mutual respect, common sense, and common courtesy for your neighbors. So I think, I know, I'm sure this will pass. But I think it's important to talk about the larger issue here, where it's, we can create guidelines, and obviously, we can't create a bylaw, but if we could, we could add more bylaws. And in my mind, it doesn't necessarily grow a community. So putting more rules, putting more structures, putting that out there, we can make this guideline, it could be the best guideline in the world. But if somebody's not following it today, and we hand them the paper, and they read it, are they going to follow it tomorrow? Is that issue still going to persist? So I mean, we can spend a lot of time trying to make people good neighbors, but I don't think that creating those guidelines is necessarily going to make somebody be a good neighbor. I think talking to your neighbors, growing your community, mutually respecting them. If I have an issue with my neighbor, I would rather, I think, go deal with it person to person, and maybe we agree to disagree, but at the same time, if the city puts out a guideline, I'm likely going to continue my behavior, and they're likely going to continue theirs. So I respect where this is coming from, I will support it, but I think it's important to have that conversation. This seems pretty simple at first, until you actually look at it a little bit more. Maybe it's because I grew up in the country, where when you had an issue, you didn't go to a politician all the time, or you didn't go to a government or City Hall, you actually went and tried to address it. And I'm not dismissing that, maybe these people have, but at the same time, I'm not sure even if this guideline comes out, that it's going to solve these problems. They're going to persist. The other thing that was trending on the social media on that group was the fact of, how are you going to know whether the snow came from this person's property or that person's property? Who blew it on your driveway? Short of actually witnessing them doing it, how are you going to know where leaves came from? So, I mean, even if we could create a bylaw, how would you enforce that? If you're, if you create the bylaw, you have to create enforcement to go with it, or it's just another set of rules. So I just wanted to kind of point out all those things, as, to me, growing a community is have people being empowered and solving their problems at the lowest level possible. So creating a guideline that tells people how to be a good neighbor, mutual respect, common sense, common courtesy, that's how you be a good neighbor. And I think that most people in the city believe in that and act that way every day. I think that there's some people that maybe don't, but I don't think that this guideline will change those behaviors. Anyways, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess just an example that, or two that might help illustrate what I think is important and why this is necessary, regarding councillor Bohm's comments on, essentially, why is the city, why would the city want to get involved? The, we have, at the city level and other levels of government, have certainly been encouraging seniors to remain in their homes as long as possible, and there are quite a number of seniors that I have encountered who, one of the main challenges associated with staying in their own home is the fact that they need to get someone to come and clear the snow, and make sure that their walkways are clear of snow and ice. And of course, you know, the snow is coming from Mother Nature. This is not intended to say that anyone is to blame for the fact that there is snow, but it is meant, as councillor Neil has pointed out, to provide guidelines. So, for example, and this has happened, if someone calls the city and says, I'm a senior, I've tried to have snow removed from my property and keep it safe, there is now snow and ice that has been put in my lane, I no longer have the person available or the budget available to have that issue dealt with, I'm calling the city because I need help with this situation, what should I do? The response at this point is, very sorry, not in our jurisdiction, nothing you can do. And I think what this is meant, what this proposal is, is working towards, is to have some involvement for the city in cases where, at the very least, this process of sorting out who is responsible for removing that snow in that case, that that can be, to some extent, facilitated by guidelines, based on what we know of what happens in other jurisdictions and what might be relevant here. So I think it could be useful, and therefore, I would ask council to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ostrhoff?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I was thinking that maybe we shouldn't go there, as well, as councillor Bohm mentioned, and I've thought about it a lot, because there are issues that, that there seems to be some frustration in certain areas, and I've experienced it too within my district. So, I mean, you could widen the scope of that. You know, we have drainage issues impacted by other properties, and there's some amount of futility out there of throwing up their hands, and maybe we can do a little bit better. It's difficult to go there, but I'm looking at it saying good neighbor guidelines, and maybe we can do that, as giving some people some hope, that, you know, and sharing that. I do believe, and I agree with councillor Bohm, that, you know, we do want to encourage communication between neighbors and goodwill. And maybe this can be an impetus for that. So I guess I will support it now, and give people, you know, the ideas for good practice in being good neighbors. So I think it can be a positive thing.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to hear from what exactly we are deciding on. So, good neighbor guidelines, I mean, there's no report to accompany this motion. Does someone in staff, could someone in staff interpret what that means from a legal standpoint related to, as opposed to a bylaw? Like, what does good neighbor guidelines mean in practice?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct, there is no report, because it's a motion coming from council, asking staff to work on this, and not a staff report with a recommendation coming forward. So the guidelines are essentially things that we would, you know, suggest that people can do to be good neighbors. It's not, they're not enforceable. So that would be the difference between a bylaw and guidelines are more suggestions, and a bylaw would be something that would be enforceable. But in this case, as councillor Neil pointed out, there's the issue of, you know, enforceable from a property owner to a property owner, that is not somewhere where we have jurisdiction as a municipality.
Thank you. Okay. So to use an analogy then, with that clarification in mind, for example, on the Utilities Kingston website, about rainwater, for example, there are suggestions on how to collect rainwater. On deciding whether or not to water your tree in front of your property, there's suggestions on how to measure rainfall using a tuna can. Things like that, that are not to do, nothing to do with bylaws, are, do exist on the city websites, and are, I would say, value-added things that the city, it's guidance, guidelines for guidance that the city can provide. There's probably many more examples. I'm glad that that distinction has been clarified, because without that distinction, I fully agree with councillor Bohm, that we, knowing that we can't regulate behavior between neighbors, private citizens, it's a fool's errand to go there and try to regulate behavior. Just imagine, you know how many of my constituents misbehave on a regular basis? I live there, so I don't go there, or when I do, I regret it. So, so I would say that a bylaw would be a mistake, and I would agree with all those comments from that Facebook page are probably bang on if it was a bylaw we were talking about. But we're talking about guidelines, helpful suggestions, in other words, and I think that's value-added, and because that's been clarified, I was initially thinking that I didn't like this, because it's over-regulated, but I'm going to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor George, and then councillor Hutchinson. Councillor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. Who would have thought, second last meeting for some of us, we'd be debating snow and leaves? Why, what a strange world. Anyways, I don't want to support this, you know, I don't think it's the city's role to be getting into the midst of potential civil action, if there's going to be something, because then it's a matter of, well, the city said this, the city said that. And I, to me, that's not our role. I agree with what councillor Stroud was alluding to, and the fact that there are already some comments on the website in regards to how to handle your water runoff and that type of thing. It might be a simple action of putting something on our website that says, respect your neighbor, use your own snow storage area, and, you know, deal with your leaves, bag them prior to pickup time and that sort of thing. But I just don't see, you know, the fact that even if we come up with a good neighbor policy, if you want to call it that, or a practice, I don't know that we have to go into a big, big, big-ish, or big, spend a lot of time having staff review and come back with suggestions and debate it at the Administrative Policies Committee and that sort of thing in the future. I think it's pretty, and I don't know how you'd ever police it. Where are we going to get the staff to go? We can't, we don't have enough staff to get out and deal with the bylaw situations that we currently have, if anybody has phoned bylaw and asked them to deal with garbage in the parks, or deal with illegal parking, or whatever else is going on, which I have a lot in my end, to try and get staff out there. It's pretty difficult to do. It's usually two, three, four days before somebody can attend and deal with it. Well, by that time, the snow could have melted, the leaves have blown away. I just don't see the point. I think this is, you know, something that we don't need to get into. So personally, I'm not going to support this. I think it's ridiculous, and not something the municipality should be involved in at all. And that's my point of view.
Thank you. Cassidy?
Well, the problem with this, of course, everyone's right. And I suppose everyone's wrong, but with some experience with these sorts of things myself, I would say that in many of these smaller situations, most people are pretty accommodating, they try to get along with their neighbour, because frankly, life is just easier that way. And then there's those who are just not heeding, they're not listening, you can't do anything with them, and, but there are, there is a small marginal number, maybe 15 or 20%, where if you said, you know, there are guidelines, maybe you should have a look at them. Or when they phone in, hopefully not send, as councillor George is probably saying, we're not sending anybody out to adjudicate this, you can say, well, this is what it says, you might consider that. And then you get to move that marginal number of people, maybe, to the more reasonable side of the issue. That's all, in my mind, all you can expect, and I have a feeling that's all the mover and seconder are looking for. We tried, you weren't listening, or you won't read the guidelines, who knows what will happen? So, that's, I'll vote for it, because I think there's not a lot of staff will just go and get one of these policies and bring it back and say, what do you think? So, not a lot of work, your expense involved, and I think we all know, if we have any experience at all as councillors, you know, that some of these things are intractable, some of them are solved like every day, all the time, as councillor Bohm says, by the reasonable majority, who, oh, I'm sorry, I threw that there, I won't do it again, sort of thing. But then I had someone complain to me one time, the wind blows the leaves off their, to the, onto my property. You know, we control a lot of things, but the wind is not one of them, right? Now, I didn't say that, because I'm a smarter councillor than that, but I think you all know what I'm saying, okay? So I'm going to vote for this because of the margin, and we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Councillor Turner?
Okay, I have to get my two cents. I agree we should all be good neighbours, and I think that's an important premise in this motion, and I think that we should all treat each other kindly, but I hope we don't spend a lot of money on this. I hope it's a policy that we just can write up quickly and easily, and that we don't have bylaw enforcement, because I think that would cost a lot of money to try or even consider that. So I will support this only if it's a policy and it's not, you don't spend a lot of money on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to support this, because I'm always interested to see how other municipalities deal with the same things that we get thrown at us, and the more information, the better it makes our city too, so I support it, just for the research of seeing how other cities are dealing with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Neil, you have the last word.
Very quickly, and a few last words. This is something that came up, because, and I agree, 90% of the people, you could go and knock on their door and say, blowing all that snow onto my property, I'd really wish you wouldn't do that. And people would listen to that, but that's not always the case. The only recourse, since bylaws isn't an option here, the only recourse is civil action. And there's a woman in my district, on a fixed income, who had literally a six-foot mound of snow on her front lawn, and against that, and the person she spoke to had just cursed her out. When I knocked on the door and said, you know, couldn't you redirect the snow when you're blowing it off of your driveway, I got a similar response. So would this address that issue? Possibly not, but I think, I think we need to at least try to, and other communities have best practices. There's a copy, I should have made copies and handed it out, that Calgary has done, that Property Standards shared with me. So there are best practices that I think are good neighbour approach to this problem. And all that this motion asks for isn't to involve bylaw enforcement, it's to review best practice documents elsewhere, and for one to be drafted for Kingston, that we could share as councillors when we're working in our, with our constituents, or people could pick up at the city and drop in somebody's mailbox. There are opportunities, I think, to address what is a real problem, so, so I hope this passes, with or without Mr George's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on new motion number two. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 2. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr Clerk asks for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by deputy mayor Shell, that the minutes of city council meeting number 201822, held Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, be confirmed.
Please vote. And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? We'll ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Cannon, that bylaws one and four and five be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Cannon, that bylaws four through five be given their third reading.
Please vote.
One more, please.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.